Reporting Jim.
Okay. As Chair of Barrington Select Board, I find due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized by pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance to the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to meet by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting. Phone participation, please dial 1603-664-0240 and enter conference ID 676-749-973-POUND. Video participation, audio and video recording will be taking place. Click the link BIT.LY/BarRSB. Providing public notice of necessary information for accessing meeting. We previously gave notice to the public necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams, phone, or video. Instructions have been provided on the website of the Town of Barrington at www.barrington.nh.gov. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-664-0146 or email at administration@barrington.nh.gov. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let us start the meeting by taking a roll call of attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know Law. So let's take a roll call vote, starting with Select Board Member Air.
Daniel Air, 334 Old Cockpit Turnpike. I am locked inside my office. There's no one here. It was my vote. Thank you.
George Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive. I'm in my office. There's nobody in my office to influence my vote. The only person in the house is my wife, and she is downstairs. I don't anticipate that she will come up. Thank you.
Dan Mancheck, 353 Scruton Pond Road. I'm in my office alone. The dog's in the house. He promises not to influence my vote.
James Sikosha, 21 James Henry Drive. I am in my office alone. There are people in my house, but they will not be influencing my vote. Connor, do you want me to go over the remote meeting participation after that?
Nope. I think we can just hit off with the Pledge of Allegiance and get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under Ian Unsynco, he's guilty.
All right. I forgot.
Let's start off with the public hearings. This is assurance of building permit on for Karen Gould, Catherine Cohen, and Matt Karski, map 26 lot 31. This is continued from last week's meeting, and we're going to put a vote on it. So we're going to go ahead. Any of the Select Board members have any comment on this? Before we go to open it up to the public?
I think they answered many of the questions we asked. I think there probably are still some comments from the public, though, that we probably should hear and then address.
Yeah. Okay, so George, you good? Dan?
I have a comment, please.
Yep.
A comment that I have several is that if and when, or if we do approve this, I just would like to make the individual know that her intentions or their intentions, excuse me, the possibility of building on the second floor will be monitored, and I would hope that they would respect us if we did approve it. That it's only for the first floor, not for the attic that's above it. And secondly, my question goes to Mark. After the information that came in for everything that was shown from FEMA and what have you, does the information in those letters in any way change his letter that he wrote to us regarding this request?
Okay, Dan, do you have anything?
No, I don't know if Mark's on or not. I don't see him.
Yeah, Mark's on.
I'm here.
Mark did see the letters and the information about the 14,000, and him and I talked, and he agreed to go back out. So his letter, what he wrote to the board, was after we had that conversation. If that answers your question.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Dan says he's good, so let's open it up to the public.
Okay, if you're participating on your computer, you can raise your hand. Let us know you'd like to speak. If you're participating on the phone, just speak up and let us know, and we'll call on you in order to unmute yourself. If you're participating on the phone, you have to press star six. It's different than the mute button on your phone. The system will mute you at star six. Don't see any hands going up yet. There's a couple of members on the phone. We'll give them a second. If you're trying to wager a comment, make sure you press star six to unmute your phone. Still nothing on my end, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I don't see anything on my end. Okay, well, let's bring it to vote. If you don't see anybody on your end, we're going to close public comment, and we're going to vote, starting with Select Person Air.
Somebody would need to make a motion first.
Oh. Well, I will make a motion to accept the assurance of the building permit for Holiday Lake Shore Drive.
For that first and second, is that including the requirements listed by department heads, including repairing the rutting caused by delivery traffic?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Air, aye.
Because we had a second from Dan or George?
That's correct.
Okay. So George?
Well, Bailey, aye.
Mancheck, aye.
Sikosha, aye. Vote passes. Okay, no new appointments today?
Excuse me, you have to close the public hearing?
He did.
I did.
When?
Before the vote.
Okay.
Does that affect the vote because we voted out of the meeting?
The public hearing is the comment period. So you open the public comment or public hearing period and close the public hearing period and vote.
Very well.
Okay, appointments, we don't have any, so at this point, oh, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah. I think the only board that's left that I know of is ABC. And I understand there are a couple of people have applied. Are we just, have we sent that to the ABC to see if they have suggestions based on the people that I think that have applied?
Yes, yep, a couple of people have applied, and the applications have been sent to the Chair of the Budget Committee, Steve Saunders. I received mail back from him last week, who said that when the Advisory Budget Committee schedules a meeting sometime for the summer, it can be discussed. And he didn't feel any urgency to proceed.
Yeah, I mean, I think sooner we get those done, it might help a little bit. But I think it should go through the ABC first. That would be a reasonable thing. You might ask Steve to, Frank, we haven't had a meeting recently, but I think there's some things that we're going to be asked as the ABC. I think there are a couple of things we're going to be asked before the budget season starts, aren't we? And there's some sort of questions that we have to address as an ABC.
So generally, the Budget Committee doesn't start meeting until a week before the budget process. The last couple of years, there have been a couple of topics that the Budget Committee would like to have recommended prior to the budget process. And so they've had kind of an organizing meeting over the summer. And that's what the Chair anticipated for this year, to have some kind of organizing meeting, maybe in July, contemplate the two appointments to the two open seats to the Budget Committee and discuss if there's any changes the Committee would like to see going into the 2022 budget process. So I can certainly let him know that you support reviewing that ahead of time.
Yeah, sooner rather than later. That's okay, as the liaison to the ABC. Great.
I don't see any, Mr. Chairman, please, I don't see any reason why that what he's requesting isn't something that we can just put together and say, we'd like for you to meet earlier so we can get worked out on it. There must be a reason for it, so I think we should move forward and approve his request.
Great.
Thank you, George.
Okay, so.
Want a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, second by being roll call vote, air, aye. George?
Bailey, aye.
Mancheck, aye.
Sikosha.
And just to be clear, this is a motion to ask the Budget Committee Chair to schedule a meeting soon?
That's, yes.
Organize, organize it, whatever they want to do.
Perfect.
An organization meeting.
Very good. All right, there's no appointments unless anything got added in the last six hours. So that comes up to the portion of the meeting for public comment. Two minutes per and for a total of 15 minutes. We'll wait to see if anybody wants to chime in. You can talk about, you know, how the town's doing a good job as far as the paving projects and how the people are lovely down at the DPW.
Or not.
Yeah, or not.
This is an opportunity to let all of your thousands of friends on Facebook Live know who are tuning in live just how productive the Town of Barrington is and its local government.
That's right.
You might remind them how to do, how to plug in, Jim.
Okay, with that, I don't see anything on my end. Do you see anything on yours?
I do not. No, the only phone participant we have is our road agent, Mark. All the other participants are participating on a computer, and I don't see any hands going up. Microphone coming unmuted.
Select Person Air?
The town employees are too efficient. I got my tax bill already.
Hey, they're on top of it. What can we say?
I've already paid mine.
I don't have anything on my end, so I'm going to close public comments. And we're going to go on to review of the minutes of last week. Can we get a motion for that?
I motioned to approve the minutes from last week, last meeting.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second by Mancheck, roll call vote.
George?
Oh, George, aye.
Mancheck, aye.
Sikosha.
I volume up a little bit.
Okay, that brings us up to the staff report. Going to hand it off to Connor.
Fantastic. Thank you. Everything I have is an agenda item throughout the meeting tonight. I covered the work anniversaries at the first meeting in May. I did want to just provide an update on evictions at the request of Select Board Member Mancheck. So the eviction notices are in the process of being served. The notice to vacate will be effective as of June 28. There, remember, there's four properties. One is an occupied mobile home. One is a house in a garage, which we understand to be occasionally occupied. One is a lot that has a kind of a screen house or a screen tent on it currently. And the fourth one is a lot with a camper and a shed. That fourth lot, the one with the camper and the shed, we just this morning received notice from the Sheriff's Office that there was an issue with the address and matching up with the E911 address and the address posted on the shed. So we're not certain yet, but that might delay the eviction of that property a couple of weeks, but I'll keep you posted. That's all I have.
Please. Question?
George, go ahead.
Yeah, have we changed on that fourth issue, Connor? If we change the, if we verify that that's the correct address, can we turn around and serve it even though it's posted wrong on the shed?
Yes, I think that's what the, I think that's what they'd like us to do, is change the address. And so we will, we'll do what's necessary to properly serve the notice.
Okay, because I'm just saying, if they change the address and it's not the legal address, they have the wrong address on the board. I just want to make that that would be covered that way?
We don't know, we don't know exactly what will be required. Like I said, we were just letting know this morning. So we'll make sure to do what the Sheriff's Office would like us to do that our attorney is satisfied with.
I have one other question for Connor. When does that 603 start? Is that September?
So there's a
Phone system?
Yep, so there's a few dates. Actually, every resident in the Town of Barrington receives some information audit in their tax bill insert. So the 988 Suicide Prevention Mental Health Crisis Lifeline will go into effect on I-16th, 2022. My understanding is that there's a effective, I think now, they would like folks to be using the 10-digit dialing. In October of this year, I understand that the phone carrier companies will be giving folks messages saying your call cannot be completed as dialed if you do not include the 603. So October, October is when you'll start to hear an error message, but it doesn't actually go into effect until July of next year.
Thank you.
Okay, Select Person Air?
Why are we subbing out for the sheriff to do the eviction notice? Staff can't take care of our own police department?
That's standard practice across municipalities across the state. The town acting as the landlord is a conflict of interest having the town's police department serve the formal notice. We do work with the police department for other steps of the process, but the evictions have always been served by another law enforcement agency.
Okay, we can hear from municipal office administrator Cottle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for your
You're really quiet, Tiffany.
Yeah.
Can you hear me a little bit better?
Yeah.
Okay, great. For your review and signature, tonight, we have the meeting minutes for the Select Board meeting that were just approved. I'll send those out tomorrow. The private road agreement for Holiday Lake Shore Drive, that will be a, that will be sent to Chairperson Nap. Only need one signature on that one. And then still out for signature, our payroll 2021-120, that manifest, manifest for AP 2021, 2021, 221. And then five exemption application denials. The manifest and the exemption applications, we actually do have enough signatures, but if everyone wants to make sure that they've signed it, you are welcome to check them. And that's it.
Excellent. Okay, that brings us up to old business. Connor, you want to take a little stand on this? Talk about the phone system?
So I wanted to circle in, circle back on the phone system. Provided a little bit of background in my report about the town's transition to the existing phone system. The program that the Technology Committee recommended the town switch to back in 2018, Office 365 supports a phone system. The system we had in place previously was nearing end of life and was not going to be supported or replaced in kind the same way. It was a good opportunity for the town, timing-wise, to make that transition. That transition happened last year. As indicated in my report, it hasn't been without issue and more timely in the last month. The police departments had to notify residents a couple of times that the phones weren't working properly in that department, which in those cases, the callers would have been sent to the Stratford County Dispatch. And so the Technology Committee has obviously been involved since the beginning. They remain very heavily involved now. Two members, both Dave Hallback and Will Lenharth, have spent a good deal of time with the members of the Public Safety Building, the end users, and Rockport, our managed service provider, to try to troubleshoot and work out the issues that they're experiencing. So like I said, the important to make sure that the community is aware that those issues are happening, be transparent about that, also that it's being worked on. And at this time, the Technology Committee anticipates that the problems are, that those deficiencies can be resolved. There'll be a meeting again on June 8, and that will be a topic for discussion. So happy to answer any questions.
So this is something I, so I heard about this, and I actually saw it online that our phones were down. I had some time, so I went down to check them out, and they, you know, by the time I was there, they were working. So I want to let the people of Barrington know that, you know, and I'm serious about this because it's a big deal, you know, for our residents that need to call in, and you don't have a problem that goes on. So I was talking with Chief Joy today, and he says the guy at Rockport, which is the contractor that's helping up with the networking and making sure the phones are online. This is kind of my wheelhouse, as I'm sure it's probably part of Andy's house wheelhouse. But I was thinking that we should do like a 90-day program with Rockport and have them go in maybe for the first month, do it weekly, have a weekly go-in, go-in, make sure the system is all updated with the firmware, make sure the phones are dialing in. So do that for a month, say everything goes well, because the thing that we don't have right now is time to know that it's solid the way that it is. So I'd rather have guys come in, Rockport come in, check it weekly, make sure that there's no hiccups. Then, then if it, you know, it holds out, it's good. Next month, it goes bi-weekly, and the last month, we do bi-weekly. And then that should solve any future issues and get us to the point because, you know, like you had told me, it's the only building on the system that's having issues.
I think it's a great suggestion, and I'm sure that I could get a proposal from Rockport in time for the Technology Committee meeting.
Yeah, cool. Okay, does anybody have a comment on that? Dan, George, Danan?
No, I was going to ask for the tech committee. Be good for me.
Okay, cool.
The only comments, I'm sorry, go ahead, pardon me.
I was going to move on if we were good. So go ahead, George.
Danan had his hand up first.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we also should make sure that the school's plugged into that, too, that meeting, because they do have, if they have concerns, it might be useful to get ahold of their, to include their technology people as well.
Yeah, just in case they found something that, you know, maybe somebody didn't. I agree with that.
My only comment, that's all I might, my only comment.
George, you gonna, you gonna?
My comment is that I think that we need to see where we stand when Connor gets the proposal because there's no telling what, how much liability we can be accountable for if this issue is not addressed. Not only would it turn around and shock the taxpayers, but, you know, go share the cost. So I think what you recommended was excellent, and I look forward to seeing that, even if we had to just receive a email out for us to turn around and have it reviewed ahead of the meeting, and we can go from there. I know we can't vote on it, but at least give us a heads up on it.
Now, granted that I don't, I don't know to the extent of, you know, what Rockport does with their firmware, how long everything takes to go through and check. But I mean, coming from, you know, a typical electrician maintenance background, you know, he might go in and, or Rockport goes in, and it might be two to three hours each time. So I mean, with this whole 90-day process or three months, you know, we're probably looking at like a 40, 40-hour week in total that they would probably be out there doing it, if I had to guess. Like I said, I don't know what they're doing, but that's, that's the best guess that I can give everybody. Danan, your hands up?
Yeah, I was just thinking, shouldn't this be as part of the contract with them to manage the system? Shouldn't they be doing this on their own, since we seem to have recurring problems? Shouldn't this be part of their, part of their contract, I guess, or part of their function?
Yeah, it is. It's, oh, sorry, Jim.
Yeah, they, they have shown up, like, when, when the phones have dropped out and there's an issue. They've been very responsive in working with Chief Joy and getting down there as soon as possible. But, you know, nobody, I don't think is going to set up a maintenance contract, you know, in the contracting world for an issue like this. So that's why I came up with it. We should address them with it, get a price from them. Because even if they don't offer it, but I don't know, it might be in the contracts. I haven't seen the contract either. I don't know how we work as a town yet with contractors. I work with a bunch of different municipalities, but some work differently. So maybe we should get that contract reviewed, make sure that it's not in there. But if it's not in there, we should, we should implement it just to get this problem solved. So that way, it's done, it's behind us, we're doing our due diligence to the town. Because also, another big thing is the employees are very frustrated. And I wanted to let them know as well that, you know, we all are working on this, and it will get resolved one way or another.
Just two things, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair?
Go for it.
First, the contract with Rockport, our managed service provider, is $1,000 a month for support of our technology across town. And so they included with that contract is two eight-hour days per month onsite. So currently, they have a tech onsite every other Tuesday for onsite service. And so those are the specific contractual terms. They also have minimum response times for emergent situations, which Jim mentioned a little bit. Additionally, I mean, as Jim alluded to, this is something that is, has been, has received a lot of energy and attention for really quite a few months. I'm glad to have the support of the Select Board for, you know, continuing to find a solution. One of the things that's in progress right now is also looking at a third-party contractor as well to come in and do a similar review and, you know, so be able to check. And, you know, so be able to check the configuration, the end user hardware with a kind of second set of eyes of system configuration. And so that would be something in conjunction. And to select person Bailey's point about an email before additional board action. I do not anticipate that the cost of this would rise to the requirement of, of board action. We have funding available in our admin contracts line for situations such as this. And so it's something we'd be able to act on before the next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, anybody else? Comments, concerns, questions? Okay, I don't see anything. That brings us next down to the Town Clerk Office Availability Adjustment. The Town Clerk has expanded the availability of the Town Clerk's office in order to best accommodate the Barrington residents. The Town Clerk's office is now open for walk-in service on Mondays and Thursdays. It'll remain open for appointments only on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Appointments can be made online at B I T dot L Y dash, or slash B A R R T C A P P O I N T M E N T. Dot. All customers are encouraged to wear masks. Starting June 1st, Wednesday will be the only day available for appointments only. Hours and availability starting on June 1st. Mondays, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., no appointment necessary. Tuesdays, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., no appointment necessary. Wednesdays, 12:15 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. by appointment only. Thursdays, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., no appointment necessary, and they are closed on Fridays. Dan, what you got?
I don't support this at all because it doesn't address the working people. So on Wednesday, it used to be open 6 o'clock, so people were able to go there after work. So a lot of people are computer literate like myself and dealing with registrations is, they don't have the opportunity to go there. I can't support the change on Wednesday.
So Dan, the, you'll remember from when the hours first changed after COVID started. The Department of Motor Vehicles, which supports the activities of the Town Clerk's office, reduced their hours on Wednesday, so they were no longer open until 6. And so the tough part of the, in the Town Clerk's office is they're on the phone with the DMV constantly throughout the day, acting as the DMV's agents and registering vehicles. And so it severely limits what they're able to do if they run into a hiccup, if the DMV isn't open when they're open. And so the, what the Town Clerk proposed at the time was to maintain hours consistent with the DMV. And so I agree that it, you know, that the DMV should consider expanding their hours back to 6 on Wednesdays. And then the town will follow suit.
Dan, Dan brings up a really good point, I think, though, that there are other things that people go to the Town Clerk for. It would seem that maybe someday they ought to have later hours for people working, working people. I mean, I, I appreciate the work the Town Clerk does, but there may be some times when our citizens can't, can't access those hours.
I'm in agreeance, but I want to get to George. George had his hand up.
Thank you very much. I, I, I looked at the hours here and it's, it doesn't say just what kind of service the Town Clerk and her staff do provide for us. But to go along with what several people have said here is that right now we're down to 30 and 3/4 hours by the way this new schedule is set up. And my, my, my question for consideration, question for consideration is why don't we open up earlier on Wednesday so we can coincide with the registry or the DMV? However, we, we look at it, I mean, that's a possibility we have. The other possibility of having hours is turn around and there's nothing else we can change except for Wednesday to provide the service necessary. So, I mean.
So I'm happy to invite the Town Clerk to the next meeting if you'd like to discuss the hours with her. You have to remember that as an elected official, it's under her purview and duties and responsibilities to set the hours for the office. She's always worked collaboratively with the Town Hall and the Select Board in making hours and availability that accommodate residents in town. So if you'd like to have further conversation with her, I'm happy to invite her to the next meeting.
I, I, I agree with where you're coming, Connor, and I just feel a little foolish now, not knowing the fact that the clerks set those hours. I was not aware of that all the years that I've been here. So I just, because to her and the other Town Clerk have always accommodated requests come from the voter selection. So that's one of the reasons why it's kind of dumbfounding. So I guess, it's, it's, well, I'm not advocating, I'm, I'm talking about the later hours because we're not providing that service. And like I said, is there any way that we can write a letter or you can write the letter for us to the DMV asking them to put additional hours in on Wednesday? Or do you think we'll get crucified?
I, I don't see why you'd get crucified if that's something you wanted to do. I'd be happy to do it on your behalf.
I, I would like to see it that way because then it goes to what Mr. Air was saying about providing more service. So I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to get this thing way out of hand, but, you know.
I, I see an issue with that too, George. I mean, you know, we have, I mean, you got to think about the most common jobs, right? Nine to five. And, you know, a lot of people getting back into work that really can't afford to miss it, to leave early for the, for the DMV or for the town. So, but you got to do it at the end of the day to, to travel if the DMV's doing it. It just, yeah. Dan, go ahead. What do you got?
I think the governor's going to be opening things back up, so I think a letter would be good. It might be opened up right now.
Okay, so I, I'm giving the, the opinion from the board that we want to ask Connor if he will write a letter to the DMV stating that, you know, we request that they change their hours to 6:30 so we can match up ours on behalf of the Barrington Select Board. George?
Thank you very much. You know, years ago, when we were in the old building, it was determined that by not having hours on Friday, we would save the money on heat. And that was one of the reasons why we went to a four door, four day week and extended hours on Wednesday. Was, it was an effort to save money. And I understand, if my memory serves me correctly, that it, that it did work because it gave us three, three days of low stain pressure so that we didn't have to worry about it. But, you know, there's going to come a time when the residents in Barrington increase that we're going to have to look at opening up on Friday.
Well, we'll have to.
No, I just, I'm just saying, just to look at, something to consider. I'm not making to do it now during this pandemic or anything else. All I'm saying to you is, is, you know, we got to provide that service. And so far it's worked out with the short hours. And if it continues where the population increases with these projects that we have going outside, we need to make that, be willing to have that consideration or at least just turn around and discuss.
Totally agree with you. I'm sure we will cross that bridge once those numbers get up there and we'll tackle that with no problem. Dan, last thing, what do you got?
What about Saturdays? What if you do, we want that too, but not now.
Yeah, all right, well, we're not going to worry about that right now. We're going to follow up, everybody's in agreeance. Connor can write a letter on the behalf of the Select Board requesting that the DMV opens back up to their original hours so we can better serve our community. Okay, we don't need a motion for that, right?
Correct. I understand the board's position.
Okay, so I'm going to bring Erin Paradise on. She's on, I spoke with her earlier, Public Works Week, Pet Food and Pet Drive. Erin, do you want to chime in and, and talk what you're doing over there for the, for all the pups and cats and critters of Barrington?
So just in years past, we've tried to promote Public Works Week and by doing a food drive. And this year we did a little bit, something different. And we're doing a pet food and supply drive, which will benefit several organizations, sorry, and our local food pantry as well. We have a couple senior people who use the, the food pantry and they have asked for specific food items for their dogs. So some of that will go to obviously our local food pantry and then other organizations. It is kitten season, so every facility everywhere is looking for kitten food, if it be wet or dry food. I am going to extend it for at, at least another week, if not two. And it can be dropped off Monday through Friday at the Highway Department or open at the transfer station hours on Tuesday, 1 to 6, Saturday, 8 to 4. I'll have tubs out and they are designated that says that has our food drive for the pets.
Okay, is there like anything on our Facebook page or website that has the specifics for what those seniors are, are asking for?
Yes, I made up a flyer. I will share it again. I shared something.
Can we pull that up on the screen, Connor?
Yes, we can. Just give me one second.
So I'll make sure that I put that out again, at least once a day, I'll try to. I'm trying to get other information out too. So we do have it and I know that the town page had shared it as well.
Okay, well, that's excellent. George?
Thank you very much. I just have a suggestion. Several years ago, I was involved with a, another group. And what we did is we went around to some of the, not distributors, but the stores that sold maybe just pet food and asked them what they had for samples and if they could donate their samples to the project that I was working on. And you'd be surprised as how much samples they have there that they, they don't issue or distribute. So I think maybe if somebody were to do that, I would be willing to work with you if that was, if that, if you needed that kind of help and go around to some of these stores and ask them and try to increase the collection that way. That was just another suggestion.
So we're, we're very blessed to have a great surrounding community, Barrington and Lee. We have the Pet Connection that Erin's working with in town. I believe they're doing a, a discount. And I, I reached out to Craig Maggio from Friendly Pets, right at the Lee Traffic Circle. And he wants to link up with Erin and I was in the middle of getting those two connected today. And I'm sure they'll link up tomorrow and see what they can do. And I'm sure we'll have updates on our Facebook page and website. Okay, thank you, Erin. Thanks, Connor. Probably good with the food supply drive screen. We're going to head into new business now. The topic is Police Department Taser Replacement. The Police Department needs to replace the tasers, which are now outside of warranty. Funding is properly budgeted in the Police Equipment Capital Reserve. There was an attachment for the taser request. Additionally, the chief would request a waiver from the town's purchasing policy due to the unique nature of the TASER Conductive Electrical Weapons, CEW. The Police Department conducted research when the TASER was purchased and implemented. It is the industry standard nationwide and has executive scientific and practical history in the law enforcement community. Further, we currently contact with Axon for our body worn cameras, BWCs. And Long Term Plan will combine the BWCs and CEWs, the body cams and the tasers, purchasing when our contract is due to be renewed in 2026. They are asking the Select Board to consider waiving the purchasing policy and authorize the use of $20,954.40 from the public or from the Police Equipment Capital Reserve to purchase 12 new tasers with extended warranties. I wasn't looking to see whose hand was up first, so we'll start with select person Air.
I think Dan was. Go ahead, go ahead. I just can't approve this waiving the person or all the times up and stuff. And then two, I don't recall this being budgeted, the warrant article and stuff for the money. And then the chief's letter, if you'd like to use the funds for that, just because we have the money set aside, I think it should have been more budgeted in the fixed budget than that. And with the phones coming up, I'd rather have money for that than the tasers. And a long-term commitment, I can't do a long-term commitment.
I don't think the phones will be, be an issue. I think there might be avenues through the, the emergency PPP stuff. Connor, I don't know if that's possible, but, you know, maybe that's something we can look into. But it seems like we're on the tail end of the phone thing, so I wouldn't be completely worried about a cost. Is Chief Joy on? Do you want to, or actually, we should go actually to Danan. Your hand was next.
Yeah, my, my question was, does this extended warranty go all the way to 2026? That was for Chief Joy.
Okay.
I can hit that one easy.
I, I do my best with easy questions. Go.
So I can hit that one easy, yeah, the, the tasers, when we purchase them, will take us through to 2026, at which point we'll be on schedule to rotate everything together with Axon at that point in time. I can also hit on the purchase policy waiver. TASER is a sole service provider, so it'd be essentially impossible to get multiple quotes for the same equipment because it is TASER's equipment. It is their product and they are sole source.
And I will just direct the Select Board to the exemptions from the cases that do not require bidding, exemption from the purchasing policy. It's not numbered, but the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7th point of the exemptions is only one known source of purchase and there's no comparable substitute product or service, which the, I, I think there's an argument to be made that it doesn't require action of the board to exempt the policy. But it's been my practice always to make sure it's clear to the board that that's the intention, consistent with what Chief Joy said.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much. I'm going to be a pain in the neck again and just say that right now we have a capital reserve. It's a capital reserve for the police equipment, so the telephones are covered under a different one. You know, I, I do have a concern, but, you know, here again, you watch the news as well as I do. You know, and I've gotten in trouble before when we had that incident down in Greenville several years ago and I made comments about looking forward. So I think this is another case of us looking forward and protecting our police department and giving them the tools that's necessary to provide the protection to myself and the other voters and residents of Barrington. Thank you.
Okay, Chief Joy?
Yeah, the, the one point I didn't hit on from select man Air was the budgetary issue. When we were asked to prepare our budgets, we were asked to do so and try to alleviate any basically unnatural spikes in our budgets from year to year. Budgeting for the tasers would be one of those unnatural spikes, which is the point of setting the warrant in the first place was to avoid those ups and downs every year and to try to keep these projects done in this manner. So I believe I was meeting the expectations of the board and ABC by doing so. If I'm incorrect, then certainly we can look into budgeting it, but that means we're going to continue on with out of warranty, out of service tasers, which likely could get us in trouble.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I I see this as as a no brainer, especially to bring up what George had said with the news. I mean, you know, we need to provide our town. We already got the the cameras that we purchased. We're doing our due diligence to have everything, make everybody accountable. But you know, we need to to cover ourselves as the town and not have tasers that are out of warranty. That could, you know, one of two things either malfunction and not work. And then, you know, the police officer has, you know, has to go where they, you know, use their firearm instead of the TASER. You know, or the TASER might be might send a charge that's too big and you know, we could have issues. So with my two cents in there, we're gonna go to a roll call vote, starting with select personnel.
Oh, oh.
Oh.
Yeah. Jim.
In.
On this issue, I wanted to suggest to Chief Joy that when they start, when we start talking about replenishing the capital reserve, that you kind of make some plans, start making plans for budgeting the whole, whole thing with the new body cameras and the and the TASER for 2026. It would be useful to start building that capital reserve back up after. Because basically this depletes the capital reserve, I believe.
Yes, sir. That that is correct. It basically takes it down for this year. And again, we have been looking forward to that in in the matter with the compliance calendar as far as cameras and everything else going forward as well.
Thanks.
I do. I think we have what 28,000 and change Connor?
Uh, 25.
25, thank you.
I move that we waive the. Whatever it's called, the purchasing policy and authorize spending $20,954.40 for purchasing new tasers at this point.
That would have to come out of the capital reserve.
Out of the capital reserve.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote, starting with select person air.
Yeah, no, I don't.
Bailey, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Sakosh, aye. Motion carries. Okay, um, next up is Public Safety Radio Communication Study. The police and fire and highway departments all rely on the radio communications to varying degrees. Each system is different, but they share the need for improvement slash replacements. Over the fast, the past few months, the Technology Committee has been discussing the best way to approach these upgrades. It was all agreed that hiring an expert consultant would allow the town to make the most informed decisions. What we did not know at the time is that the long term resident Norman Boucher or Boucher is such an such an expert consultant. Am I saying is that is it Boucher?
Correct, yep.
Mr. Boucher's company was Communications Design Consulting Group. CDCG has provided services to local county, state and private organizations across country. On April 2021, Connor met with Mr. Boucher. And we discussed the scope of the experience of CDCG. Connor, I'm gonna let you take it from here because this looks like your stuff, not mine.
No, you're good. So yeah, much to my surprise, Mr. Boucher offered to provide the services to the town for free. We'll we'll have an agreement in place for a dollar, but he expressed his interest in giving back to his community. For those who've been around for a long time, he was integral in the development of the water system down off Tibbetts Road. And has been involved otherwise, but is is interested in providing his services to the town for free. And so I have a copy of the proposal in the printed materials and attached to my report. Mostly just for the board and community to see the scope of what we're looking at, to be able to evaluate. Like Jim said, we just want to make informed decisions. We're going to have to spend some long dollars on our radio communications that we've been saving for for a number of years. Everybody's familiar with Chief Walker stepping to the microphone and preparing folks for the money that we're gonna have to spend on our radio upgrades. And as that time draws near, we really want to make sure we're making informed decisions. And and that will be the primary focus of of this study. While also identifying other opportunities for improvement and filling in some some gaps. Including better coverage for radios inside our schools, which are known dead spots. And so, yeah, really asking the select board to support this proposal. So we can engage the services of Mr. Boucher, continue to work with the public safety. Police, Fire and Highway and Technology Committee on this project.
Okay, thanks Connor. Select person Mantrick.
I I just wanted to emphasize, and I think it's in the proposal as I read it, but just to remind people that probably need to. Also include the school board's technology committee because I think that's one of the biggest gaps in our radio coverage. Seems the most dangerous gap to me.
All right, would you, oh, go ahead Connor?
Oh, I was just gonna say, Mr. Boucher and Jeff Delangi and Jim Toll already have a meeting on the books to discuss such a thing.
Thank you.
Okay, select person air.
Do we have money budgeted for any upgrades?
Yes, yeah, I was just saying that we've been setting money aside for a number of years in the Emergency Communication Upgrades Capital Reserve. And so we're we're nearing the time of spending that money. But we want to make sure we make informed decisions. And so we don't have the radio communications expertise in town. Previously, we've relied on the salespeople, the folks that we buy equipment from, which they they haven't steered us wrong. But with with the, you know, we'll be looking at spending a couple hundred thousand dollars. So before we do that, we really want to make sure that we've got an expert consultant on our on our side to help make those decisions.
One more question. Do you know the balance in that account? Because a lot of it got diverted from the Old Town Hall to move that to cell tower.
I can get you. I can get you the balance. It's a it's a couple hundred thousand. Um, at this point. But I'll get you the exact.
Select person Mantrick.
I move that we. Authorize the acceptance of the CDCG proposal for radio communication studies.
Okay, we have a motion from select person Mantrick. Do we have a second? Second from select person Bailey. Okay, roll call vote, starting with select person air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Sakosh, aye. Motion carries. Okay. Now we are on to Stars and Stripes for Barrington Utility Poll Utilization Application. Long of the short, we are talking about the application to put the American flags on the electrical and telephone poles in town. Do we need more discussion on this or would somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like a motion for acceptance.
Okay, we have a motion from select person Bailey. A second. Okay, Dan.
I want to take this time to. Appreciate the hard work. I saw her working on the poles up there, going up and down there. So I'd like to recognize that in the motion, the hard work she puts into her. I know her exact name.
Stephanie Bodak.
Oh, that's it.
She doesn't.
Stephanie Dimkey, excuse me. I apologize.
That's why I didn't know her last name.
I'm gonna play it safe and say thank you Tiffany. I did see her out this weekend. She's out there. She's got a ladder. She does it all by herself. Thank you for your work around town. I think all the Patriots truly appreciate it. Okay, Danan, your hands up?
Not anymore.
Okay, so we had a motion from. Was it George? Or was it? Okay, so we had a we had a motion from select person Bailey seconded by select person Mantrick. Roll call vote, starting with select person air.
Air, aye. Bailey, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Sakosh, aye. Motion passes. Okay, next up on the list is reverse involuntary lot merger. MAP 265 Lot 9. We are being asked to vote on this. State statute continues to require municipalities to authorize the reversal of involuntary lot mergers at the property's owner's request. We had some attachments in there. Staff has reviewed the request and confirmed that the lots were involuntarily merged. The select board is asked to consider authorizing the reversal of the involuntary lot merger of MAP 265 Lot 9.
So moved.
Second.
Dan, you had your hand up?
I was making the motion.
We got a motion from select person Bailey, a second from select person Mantrick. Roll call vote, starting with select person.
Bailey, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Sakosh, aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next up is donate expanded row on tax deeded property to NH DOT on 202. This is a discussion. The town is, the town took 46 small road last year by tax deeding. The lot has 850 feet of frontage on 202. The town's land committee will recommend the sale of the lot later this year. While reviewing the lot, the lands committee noticed that the NH DOT. ROW gets narrower, but halfway through the lot. About halfway through the lot. The committee recommended asking if New Hampshire DOT was not interested in expanding the ROW ROW while the lot remained under the town ownership. In the conversations with the NH DOT, they would be interested before proceeding. We are asked to know if there are any objections from the select board. If the select board is interested in proceeding with a future, vote will be required. How do you guys feel on that? Dan or Danan, which one was first? Okay, select person here. We'll go. We'll do it alphabetically that way.
No, the town lands have no problem, but they don't care any cost to the town. That's the only issue they have. And then it's up to the state whether they want to do. I would I would recommend in the future and now.
Okay, select person Mantrick.
No, I was just gonna point out that was one of the, one of the eviction notices on that property too.
Yes. Okay, anything from select person Bailey?
No, I'm just, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, well, this isn't a vote. It's just discussion. Connor, would you like to add anything?
No, I have my marching orders. I'll continue conversations with NH DOT. I understand that they're very interested and they're working out the details for covering all of the costs. And just to let the select board know, if we do proceed, this will require an RSA 4114A process. That's about a two month process. You'll remember it starts with comment by the Conservation Commission and Planning Board, followed by two public hearings, two weeks apart. And then two weeks after the second public hearing is a vote by the select board. And so you'll be, if if we proceed with this, you'll be hearing a lot about it. But I appreciate the input from the select board and we'll we will proceed in that direction.
Okay, excellent. That brings us up to select persons report and concerns. And real quick, I mean, I'm no grammar grammar Nazi, but we can just remove chairperson's nap. On there since he's not attending the meeting today. With that being said, let's start with select person air, reports and concerns.
As much as concerns, I don't make a public, I brought Dr. Connor, one of the Robert's man. And then the. The town has conservation to a special project forum. I can't mention that, but Connor, you on Green Hill Road has conservation to assess a project forum and it's tight lips and it will be revealed later on after new location is found. At this time, we're not release it. Thank you.
Okay, select person Bailey.
I didn't attend the last meeting for personal reasons.
Okay.
The and the CBA will be coming up later, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. Select person Mantrick.
Yeah, I attended the school board meeting on the 18th of May. Just, they've changed their mask policy for students. They're gonna continue to have masks in cla- in class, but not outside when the kids are outside. Either at gym class or outdoor recess. There was some, there was some controversy. There were some parents there who were pretty insistent that they wanted the mask policy completely gotten rid of. And that's okay, but as they were leaving, at least one of the persons. Made a racial comment about one of the school board members, which I think is pretty unacceptable. And I think that we should be very careful when we have public comment that it's okay to disagree, but to actually make comments, threatening comments to members of either the school board or the select board or any of the boards. I think that ought to be forbidden. George has his hand up.
Go ahead, select person Bailey.
I'm not familiar with this here, but did the school board do the option to notify the police? Or was there a policeman in attendance to what it is? I see Connor has some comments that I would like to hear.
Yeah.
Connor, go ahead.
Please, the police are notified.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the school board member did feel threatened and I think quite rightly. So I think it's it's just, and it was a racial thing, not just a personal thing. It was it was a racial comment. The other thing, they they selected a champion for children's award to Deanna Ray, who's the director of student services. There's a board workshop on the first of June. It's a public meeting. It goes from four to eight. It is a public meeting, either in person or virtually, if anyone's interested. 12 to 15 year olds. There was a COVID vaccination clinic. There will be one Saturday and then a second one on the 15th of June. I think it's probably either Moderna or Pfizer, so there'll probably be a follow up on that. And I mentioned earlier that it would be useful if we could combine our, or at least have our tech committee and the schools tech committee get together and certainly purchasing hardware. I don't know, lots of things that we could probably save both of us some money or should be concerned about, but that's separate issue. The ABC did not meet, won't meet until maybe June. And the, there was no transfer committee, transfer station committee meeting.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make sure it was clear because I don't want to discredit the the school director of technology. He is a member, Jeff Delangi is a member of our technology committee, attends the meetings regularly, offers great input. And pretty soon we'll start working on a incident, a combined incident response plan to leverage both of our technology. So I I come from the field of thought that there's always opportunity for expanded collaboration with the school. So I certainly agree with that sentiment. But I give a lot of credit to Mr. Delangi for continuing to participate in and be the liaison for our our technology committee.
No, I, he mentioned that also. I just wanted to emphasize it.
Awesome. Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Dan?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. I asked Jesse what was going down at the rec department. They're wrapping up the end of the school year. They're getting ready for summer camps. They have staff trainings. They also have a goal to reach 500 pounds. So far, they have gathered 195 pounds of plastic so far, which is amazing. Their their total goal is $500 towards a bench. That's what's on, what's going on at the rec department. Obviously, Chairperson Nap is not here, so he cannot report. With that being said, unless you have anything else Connor, I'm gonna open it up to public comments where the town of Barrington or anybody on this meeting can tell us how the town is doing such a great job. Any comments, concerns, two minutes apiece for a total of 15 minutes. George or Dan, which will, which one had? Okay, select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. I would just like to ask the board to make a consideration. Several years ago. Several years ago, lots of years ago, we put up several roadsides throughout Barrington honoring the softball, girls softball team in their, in their win. And I am fearful of the fact that as the years go by, these signs might become damaged and/or stolen or what have you. I think we should consider taking the signs down and giving them to the organization and let them in turn for a fundraiser, turn around and do a fundraiser, however they do a fundraiser, let them have those signs that are left as, as a prize for the person that do it because I, I would hate to see something with history like that go down the drain. So I think it'd be a good idea if we asked them if they wanted, and if we did, let them take it down a weekend and let them do it for a fundraiser. Thank you.
Okay, it's a public comment, can't really respond to that, but I like.
I know that, that's why I did it that way.
Okay, select person here?
Daniel Air has a taxpayer and a person who likes to work, except I'm limited now. And with the economy's going with COVID-19, the world is changing. And money's not gonna be there, the dominoes are always starting to fall. And I will be conscientious on spending money, no matter what, because the future's not bright. And I realize that and will deal with it. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna say something as just Jim Sakosha, the guy day in, day out. You know, I kinda hit some points on this meeting today real quick, kinda bringing up, you know, the issue that happened over at the school. First I heard about it. But what we need to, to remember as, as towns and as a town and as neighbors and as friends is to, to learn, well, not learn, but just to remember to, to respect others. Whether they're, they, they want to wear a mask or not wear a mask. Just some simple respect, and, and I think it'll go a real long way with people. We're all in this together and to work together and come together as a team and, you know, and I think the future would be bright. So love thy neighbor, help everybody out, and let's keep this community getting better each day. Dan, your hand's up? Okay.
I received note from Chief Joy that he has a public comment he'd like to wager if he's still with us.
Okay, Chief Joy?
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, I want, I didn't want to bring it up. I was waiting for somebody to open the door, and thankfully, select mantrick opened it for me. We are aware of what went on at the school board meeting. As somebody who's been a member of this community for 22 years, that was highly disheartening to me. I want to take this moment to let people know, because they're not used to seeing a police presence at the school board meeting, that you will be seeing a police presence at the school board meeting. The fact that an individual who is very near and dear to the police department and to the community in general felt threatened at a meeting meant for the public is unrecognizable to me. So you are gonna see police presence there. We are simply there to make sure that everybody feels safe and is comfortable.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
I would like to comment on that and say thank you.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else? What is it, pound what to unmute yourself?
Yep, star six if you're participating on the phone and you'd like to unmute yourself. And just speak up, let us know you'd like to talk.
I don't see anything on my end of things. How about yours Connor?
Nope, I don't see any notification on my side either.
Okay, with, with that being said, I would like to close non-public. And that brings us on to our May work anniversaries. Connor, you want to go ahead and let it rip?
Yes, I read through those at the first meeting in May. Typically, I won't read them again. I'm happy to, to address them if you'd like, but we do have a non-public session. Just. Yep.
So then let, oh yeah, I skipped over non-public, so at this time, I would like to make a motion to adjourn public and enter non-public.
For the purpose of reputation.
For the purpose of reputation. Can I get a second please?
Second.
Okay, with that being said.
Air, aye.
Hello?
Air, aye. With a question, are we gonna have, conduct business afterwards or just, just to?
We'll have, we'll have to come back into public to close the meeting. So we'll be back in the public.
Right.
Select person Mantrick?
Mantrick, aye.
Okay, Sakosha, aye. I will see you all over in non-public.
Goodbye. If not sooner.